You're all set whenever you're ready.
Okay. All right, I will call to order zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of zoning board of appeals are hereby notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter forty of the general laws of Commonwealth Massachusetts and all amendments there too that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, March twenty, uh, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. So any word appeals public hearing will be held by remote participation method. It's public access. This meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via channel eighteen and may be viewed via the channel eighteen website at HTTP phone slash slash streaming eighty five dot town of Barnstable dot U S slash cable cast public site. Real time access to zoning board of appeals meeting is available by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. Public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals by utilizing this zoom link and or calling the telephone number and entering the meeting ID. The um zoom link is HTTPS colon slash slash town of Barnstable dash U S dot zoom dot U S slash J slash eight two one seven five seven six one nine six one. Or calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and entering the meeting ID eight two one seven five seven six one nine six one. Applicants or representatives, individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely and may participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided above. Documentary exhibits and or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S so that they may be displayed for more public access viewing. Copies applications are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two or email Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S. I will call the meeting order by introducing board members, um, her boat and see.
And present.
Uh, Mark Hanson.
Present.
Paul Pernard.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Uh, present on the phone.
All right, um, so we do have a quorum. Notice recording, please note this meeting is recorded, broadcast on channel eighteen in accordance with MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty. I must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting and please make their presence known. All right, seeing none minutes. We had minutes from June fourteenth, twenty twenty three that Jenna provided. Um, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second, Paul.
All those are sorry, we're going to roll call. Um, in favor, Mark Hanson.
Uh, in favor.
Paul Pernard.
In favor.
Her boat and seek.
Favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So the minutes are approved. The first order of business is old, old business. Appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero zero six Denise M Anderson trustee of the Anderson seventy seven Parker Road nominee trust is petitioned for two variances from section two forty dash thirteen E residency R C district bulk regulations and two forty dash thirty six resource protection overlay district R P O D. Petitioner seeks two variances to unmerge lot one, which is forty thousand and seventy five square feet from lot two, a developed lot containing forty three thousand nine hundred fifteen square feet pursuant to the plan prepared by Sullivan Engineering Consulting, Inc. The subject property is located at seventy seven Parker Road, Osford, Massachusetts, as shown on assessors map. One one seven is parcel one three five. It's located in the residency R C zoning district. This has been continued many times from March twenty second, twenty twenty three, April twelfth, twenty twenty three, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, May tenth, twenty twenty three, and June fourteenth, twenty twenty three. And we have, uh, well, Paul Pernard has recused himself from this, um, and we have a letter from the applicant and um their counsel asking to withdraw this without prejudice. Someone want to make a motion to that effect?
Motion to accept to the withdrawal as written as a or as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Denise second. All right, roll call to approve the withdrawal without prejudice. Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Paul Pernard.
Uh, abstain.
Oh, you're abstain, yeah, uh, her boat and see.
Favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, we have no new business. We have no correspondence unless Anna did anything come in? There was a commission meeting that was canceled or something.
Right. Right, that's we just got that.
Okay, um, and so the other thing would be discussion on Paul's um wasn't on our agenda. But if we want to entertain um talking over um draft two of Paul's proposed rules, regulations and practices for continuations and withdrawals. Paul, do you want to talk that we've got a pretty good group of us here and we have time?
Yeah, I I wanted to make sure that I captured um you know, our decisions in the previous meeting. And I use Jenna's, you know, minutes as well as my notes. And the only, the only thing drafted two does was add the purpose to it, which makes it uh the format compatible with the uh town of Barnstable code.
And Aaron, I believe, were you not? You weren't here for the discussion last time, correct? I mean, do you have any sort of? I mean, any thoughts or input out if you had time to look at it?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I guess I'm just sort of curious as, as, I mean, this Anderson case for instance, and whether I can talk about that or not, but I mean, the continuation has been the longest of cases that I've sat on that has been, you know, stretched out over time. Um, I don't think that often we're faced with those types of you know, continuances. Now, we did have, uh, I know the the hearing regarding the Wendy's, for instance, there was a barrage of public comment the day of, um, but I I don't know. I I don't, I mean, I I think limiting that or making it an official, you know, sort of, and I know that's not necessarily a part of it, but yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if I see the, the, the the need personally to.
My concern and intent here was just, like you said, like for someone to follow, like the Wendy's is probably going to get kicked further into the future. And if there's a lot of constituents um that want to follow this, how do they follow? You know, how do they follow? They have to keep checking our it's not on our agenda per se, or it comes off and on and they don't know if it's going to be continued, it's going to go forward. Do they have to keep logging into our meetings and watching and hoping that it goes forward? So the idea here was to try to, you know, simplify this for you know, every, make it sort of fair across the board for members of the public that want to speak up to things and for an applicant and for us, I think, too. So we know we're going into a prepared.
I had raised that question with the uh CPTC, whatever it is, and their opinion was um, a- after three years, by the way, after, you know, special permits expire, I mean, appeals expire. And they said it's, you know, the board could it at any time, by the way, refuse to continue. And so um the the advice was to leave it at that. I mean, whether you put a time date on it or not um is is legally questionable other than the board votes to say enough is enough. And i- in the past, I remember when Jake, I'm sure you and Herb, and when Alex was here, there was, I think, one case that said, hey, we finally said, hey, you ain't got to put up a shut up or we're going to vote to um to deny the continuance uh with cause, uh, which means that ends it right there. So the um the uh, the the break, if you will, is up to the board, not necessarily by the rules or regulations.
You mean currently, Paul?
Well, that's the Massachusetts general law. It doesn't stipulate one way or the other, but I mean, yeah, we can uh, you know, you know, we can stop a con- a continued continuance anytime we want to by just voting, no, we don't accept the continuance without cause. We'll accept the continuance with cause, which means that ends it. Excuse me. We can accept the continuance with or without cause. If we, if we can deny the continuance with cause, which means that's it. So it's up to us at any point, you know, within the three year period to say enough is enough. And that's why in a continuance, we 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 request the reasons uh for the continuance, because I remember in one case it was because they were in negotiations and the negotiations were continuing, et cetera. Uh, but there was another case where there were no reason uh, uh, provided by the applicant as to why it wanted the continuance. And so I remember Alex saying, well, you know, enough is enough. So the the flexibility remains with the door with the board, whether continue or not, and that all depends upon what the reason for continuance is. And we can continue it uh with or without cause or not continue it with cause.
Denise, go ahead. Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, the people that we um that we um rescinded and without cause. What is, what are their options now? Can they come back in three months?
If if we continue without cause, they can go back at any time if we can.
Oh, they can.
If we, if we deny the continuance. For instance, if nobody shows up, and I think we just had one of those as a matter of fact.
It was the same one, the same, the same one that withdrew tonight.
Yeah, w- we have to hear it and it and we, you know, I know may have aired in the past, but um, we have to hear it and vote whether continuant with cause or deny it uh, or deny it. And so if we deny it with co- without cau- with cause, um, they're blocked for two years. I don't, does that help?
I I really like the fact that if the forty eight hour sort of requirement just allows us time to adjust our our agenda. So our agenda reflects what's happening. When when we're getting these, you know, emails the day of or the day before the public, anyone from the public can't see, you know, there's nothing posted that says, hey, by the way, this isn't happening tonight. You know, so it's a little bit, I don't know. Again, I just, I just feel for the public trying to follow these things. I can't imagine if it's something super important to you and you're trying to keep up with us. You have to log into every meeting hoping it's going to happen and then it doesn't. You try again and again and
Right.
you know, especially when people are, you know, trekking to town hall and stuff, they're coming and sitting there and then all of a sudden it comes up and it's like, oh, just kidding, not tonight.
And and hopefully, and this is a question for Anna, that, you know, the forty eight hours gives her gives her time to at least notify those that she can that it's continued.
Well, it gives us time to amend the agenda, but also keep in mind that the laser fish information on the website under zoning board of appeals is very much up to date. So it, you know, if the public gets used to going on the website, that's up to date to the to the minute.
Right, so so the forty eight hours would be reflected on the website um momentarily.
It, uh, the amended agenda, we need prior to forty eight hours to clock it in.
Right, good.
But we can update the laser fish at any time?
Correct.
So can we put the laser fish link on the agenda? Or is that not allowed? I know you can go on the website and see it, but it's, there's nothing on the agenda that directs people to see. They have to email you, correct?
No, no, the the link on the agenda, the meeting materials link, that goes right to laser fish.
On the posted agenda, though, okay, each applicant. So on the posted agenda that's like posted town hall, though, it would just say, click here for materials. It wouldn't have the link.
The agenda has the link, but the meeting notice does not.
Okay.
But but the agenda is on the website.
Okay.
Um, quick question. So when this gets eventually posted for everybody to see, let's say it gets through the process, it gets voted on, everything is there. Um, do do we need to add anything, you know, like a description or a short video or anything like that that would sort of inform the public? I mean, I know attorneys are going to understand it, but to let the public know th- this is why this is the way we're doing it now, or asking them to take advantage of where they can find the links now, or like what Jake was saying, if the link is there, you know, is that something where we want to start directing somebody? Just like an introduction message, and I know the addition of the purpose definitely states kind of what it is, but maybe just a more layman's type of um explanation from one of the board members or written.
Well, whenever, whenever a petitioner files an appeal, um, you know, Anna would ship this, you know, they talked to Anna from for most every, you know, because it has to go through Anna.
Right.
So so she would ship to them or alert them to, well, if you want to, you know, here's the rules and regulations with respect to withdrawals and continuations. And once they pull that up, they'll see the purpose and et cetera. Um, so um, so the, the, any applicant will certainly be aware of what the rules and regulations are with respect to withdrawals and continuations.
And that would be posted on the website under zoning board of appeals.
And not to, not to add work, but would it be worth having something that could be either electronically checked or anything that says we acknowledge that we understand the terms of how this works, when the appeal is filed or when, when a, when a petition is filed? Or is that, is that overkill?
Well, I don't, I don't know of any rules and regulations, whether it be the planning board or um, or the town code that that has that or requires that.
I was just asking again.
Yeah, I I I don't know.
Okay.
So again, I appreciate the 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 concern or the least of thinking of the public in these particular cases. And yet, at the same time, I'm still wrestling with really what's the purpose of, of, you know, it's been this way where is we were on Zoom for three of our meeting or were possibly one or two meetings a month, depending on our schedule. I mean, it can't be any easier for folks, in my opinion, to to you know, and and I get it. Most people are asleep at the, and I hate to generalize, but I mean, oftentimes they're sort of a, you know, not paying attention, but I just, I don't know. I I I don't, I just don't see the need to make alterations to the process at this point. Things come up. I mean, people's lives, you know, everyone's running around, run, you know, attorneys have issues. You know, attorney Schultz had to go to the hot, you know, I mean, things happen in the course of forty eight hours leading up to a meeting that may prevent somebody from showing and and um we still have the ability, as Paul just mentioned, you know, to vote on a particular case, you know, um and and allow or disallow a a continuance, you know, with or without, so.
I think for me, just having been on the board for a while, it just seems like it's happening more and more and more than it ha- it it's becoming a problem. And it sounds like it's becoming a problem with the planning board, with some of our other boards and committees, because they also express interest in this. So it's how do we curb it? Maybe we just have to get more serious in saying, hey, we're not going to accept a continuance. We just say, hey, sorry, we just maybe we just have to feel more confident that we have the power to, and it's not, you know, we can just tell them, hey, it's been three times. We're just going to send you back because we want the butters renoticed and the the process to start over. I don't know.
And it follows, oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No, but I I don't, Aaron, what what is this speci- what specifically are you, I mean, some of this is put together because of of your concerns with respect to continuances and stuff like instantaneous continuances, et cetera. So what I'm, what I'm into, I thought I had satisfied that. So I guess my question is, what specifically are you? Uh, are you concerned about with respect to draft two?
I I'm not necessarily concerned, Paul. I just, I don't know. I I I, I think there are either, you know, sort of allowances or not allowances based on each particular case that we already have the power to to, you know, to 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 make a decision on at this point, you know, depending on each particular case, and we handle them each individually, not so much. I don't worry so much about setting precedents as as, you know, across different cases so much, because I look at each case individually. I try not to use, you know, what we did over here to affect this case over here, blah, 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 you know, me personally. So I just, again, I.
Well, if you read draft two, the board has the option to uh to um jump the rules and and do what it thinks it has to do. It doesn't have to follow the rules. And that's like purposely put in there, or that was purposely put in there. So you know, we have as much flexibility as we had before. But it certainly gives guidance to both the petitioner and their representative uh and the public in terms of what we expect.
Well, I I get the impression that with some of these, it's people just at the last minute, like it's, it's, it's as though it's optional, like, do I want to go to the zoning board tonight? And I I like the 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 last discussion we mentioned that the, um, other than if it's a health or death in the family or something. I think after two continuances, the lawyer should at least have to come to the, come to the board meeting and explain why they're not going through. That'll create a lot of, you know, first of all, the the applicant will have to pay the legal fee and the lawyers aren't going to enjoy that. And maybe they'll take it more seriously about if we're on the docket, we better show up.
Right.
We certainly have seen in the past where if it's a large enough uh appeal, where you've got enough people that are against it, we've seen people where families will band together to hire attorneys, and we've had situations where those attorneys show up and all of a sudden the case isn't being heard, or there's a, there's a last minute continuance. I mean, there, that's five to seven to a thousand dollars that these people have put up for them to appear and, you know, that that money is is lost for them. And I I think this again, um and I agree with Paul that there's definitely language in there that allows us, if it's in the public's best interest that we can, you know, we can um circumvent the rules. But I think, as Jake mentioned, you know, this has started to become too frequent, too, uh, you know, uh, too callous. And we're certainly not the only county that has either done this or or is even considering this. There are some that Paul had contacted that were interested to see where we take this, um, because they're having the same issues. So I think it's a valid, um I think it's a, I think it's certainly worthy of putting something together, and and I think Paul's done a nice job to kind of um um, cover as many angles as is reasonable.
Yeah, I guess what, I guess what, go ahead, Jake, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Aaron. No, I was just going to sort of wrap up discussion and check and see where Paul was at with it, but go ahead.
So I, I, you know, I think I, uh, those allowances, I guess, was what makes me sort of, you know, not nervous per se, but but I, again, because then it's going to be come down from a case to case basis. We're going to have different, you know, we're going to change course of action depending on a particular case or so the rules aren't necessarily definitive, define, this is the way it is. Either you show up, you know, the forty eight hours prior, you make your notice. If you don't. So it's sort of like where we're at now. It's almost like that. We already had this discussion over. I can't remember what it was about, but maybe it was something similar to this where there is no definitive you know, like written rule or law saying that this is what has to happen, and if not, then it's automatic that this happens if that's the case.
Well, Aaron, and and if you read the code of the town of Barnstable, there always is an out so that the board retains uh its responsibility uh in special circumstances to um uh jump over its rules and regulations. And that's an all you can go through, planning board, or any of them, okay? And so that's all we've done. So we remain, I mean, because it's our judgment, you know, but we do have a set of rules and regulations, and if they're not adhered to, then we have the um opportunity to say tough.
Hey, I have an observation that might explain why this is happening more, and I think it's because of the Zoom meetings. Um, especially with solely Zoom meetings for what, two years? Now we're one meeting a month or so that's in person. Um, I don't know if we should treat uh withdrawals and such differently for in-person meetings versus Zoom. But it's especially uh for the in-person meetings where twenty people might show up to voice their opinions or at least view a case. Those people go home pretty disappointed and maybe more than that if the, if the case was with uh continued especially. So I don't know how you differentiate, but um it looks like Zoom isn't going anywhere anytime soon. So I think, you know, I'll have to get on call side here and say something like this is necessary.
Yeah, we went through the same discussion last, last time we discussed this. I mean.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm good. You guys, let's vote. If you want to vote, let's vote.
No, 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 no.
No, no. So Paul, have you talked to Kate or Karen in Town Legal at all about it yet or no, not yet?
No, no, no. I want to make sure the the procedure was to make sure the board was comfortable with what I had put together. And if they are, then then so let's write, so Jake, uh, to staff this thing, which is what I would call it. Uh, it, my suggestion is it has to go to the planning board. It should go to our compliance officer, which was the building commissioner. It should go to the town council. And who else would it be?
I think it would, I mean, my first step and Anna, you correct me, I'm wrong, would be to take it to to Karen Nober or Kate Conley in Town Legal and talk to them, and then I think they'll tell you what the process would be.
I would agree with that.
Okay, yeah, I I'm kind of a novice at this point. Anna, can you take it from here or do you want me to, I mean, this is what the board has drafted. And now we're looking for critical comments and opinions, n- not necessarily approval, but just critical comment. This is what the board wants to do. And so we're looking for critical comments in terms of are they okay with this or they want changes or what are their thoughts? Can you take it from here or do you want me to?
I can forward it to the legal department.
Yeah, and I mean, I can be involved, too. That's fine. Uh, but I think, I think we go to to Karen and and Kate first and just say, hey, here's what we're thinking. Here's what the board is would like here, you know, it's very spelled out. Paul, you did a great job of spelling everything out here. And I think she'll give us a a feedback of yes, you as a board can vote on this yourself, or yes, it needs to go to planning board or town council, or or she may say, hey, some of this is is beyond, you know, but maybe it it hits MGL stuff that we can't change. I don't know. But I think they're the ones that will know all that and be able to give us feedback. Uh, and so I think to talk to them and then maybe, maybe Kate will come to one of our meetings and talk about it, too.
So my question is, who who will take it from here?
Uh, and if you want to forward it and CC, Paul and I.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll just sort of go from there. And if 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 they want to have us in for a meeting, Paul and I and you can, the three of us can go in and and talk with them, or she may give us quick feedback. I don't know, you never know.
Right. And then, and then the the procedure would be, once we get all the comments and whatever uh, and and um and discuss it with the board, I think, you know, I would put together draft three, if you will. Uh, and then, once we feel comfortable with that, then then there's a formal procedure as outlined in the uh, in the draft. There has to be a formal, you know, agenda notice and a reading. And then in the subsequent meeting, the board votes on it. And and that's, that would, that would be how it would become official.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. So I think we have a plan. We'll get feedback from Kate and Karen and and go from there.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for all the work. You put a lot of work into this. I really appreciate it.
Looked really good.
And I think, I think planning board and other boards will probably be following it closely if if as we move this forward.
I know the planning board is very interested, as are a number of the towns of the Cape in terms of what we eventually come up with, because they're uh, they feel the same pressure we do with respect to their citizens and continuances. And um yeah, so they're, once we adopt it, they want copies of it.
Yeah. Any other matters not reasonably anticipated? We have a new board member who I think is fully sworn in now, right, Anna? So could can join us on meetings?
Uh, maybe Jenna knows the answer to that question. I'm not sure if he's been sworn in.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I think Cindy said that at least the vote, he first and second read was done, so he was approved by the council. But maybe hasn't made it to the town clerk to get sworn in.
Okay, maybe not.
And maybe um his conflict interest stuff, which I was reminded by Counselor Clark, just remind everyone. I don't know if if Cindy or Anne or anyone is reminding us when our two years our conflict interest training is done. I thought they were reminding us, but everyone should keep on tabs of when your time is.
Well, I'm wondering if Jenna, can you put that together again and um keep track of those on the board as to when their last uh training was completed successfully? And let us know when the two year up is.
It would be super helpful, Jenna, if that's, if that's something you can do. If not, and we can check with Cindy, because I thought after sort of it went like townwide, it kind of like a few years ago that that Cindy was keeping track of it, but maybe I'm wrong.
I think a lot of us did it all at once, but we got notified the last time.
Right, that's what happened.
Something, the meeting minutes from June fourteenth, I moved that we accept them?
We already did that.
I've been racking that over in my brain, and like, I was convinced that we didn't, okay.
Um, upcoming hearings, July twelve, which, Anna, that's in person?
Yes.
Okay, and do we have much on the agenda?
I believe we have two items on the agenda.
Okay, and then July twenty-sixth and August ninth. Uh, anyone make motion to adjourn?
Yep, so move, Paul.
And a second?
Second, Mark.
Roll call, motion to adjourn, Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Herbodsey.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so we are adjourned, Sarah, we're all set.